All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order for our Committee of the Whole meeting for Monday, June 12th on 7:00 p.m. We're a few minutes late, couple of minutes late. Apologies to those who are waiting. Thank you all for attending. I would like to ask if there are any items to be added to the agenda at this time. Myself, I do have a couple, but I'll just check in with councillors first. Any items to add? Okay, I would like to add, because it's time-sensitive especially, is the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day coming up on June 15th. And I have an update on CSAP discussions regarding the sidewalk proposal at our entrance. So with those two additions, could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Sean Sampson.
I'll second that.
Thank you, deputy warden. Any further discussion on the agenda? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So the next item is the review of the minutes from May 8th, 2023, which have been provided in your agenda, in your meeting package. Are there any additions or errors noted in the minutes? Okay, so hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Digdon. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Any further discussion on the minutes from May 8th? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried, which, as I always say, brings me to the most favorite part of the agenda that I have for Committee of the Whole. It's our presentations. We have two on the docket this evening, and we'll begin with Lisa Boudreaux, who is here to present from the Save Pondville Beach Provincial Park Group. And her presentation has just been loaded up on the screens. Visitors in the gallery should be able to see it on the monitors as well, and I think the folks home. So over to you, Lisa. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm Lisa Boudreaux, and I'm here to present on behalf of the Save Pondville Beach Provincial Park Committee. I'd like to thank the council and staff and those in attendance here for their support on this initiative.
And just maybe, Lisa, as you get started, a reminder that we do have a 15-minute window for this.
Our mission, Save Pondville Beach Provincial Park, as a group of concerned citizens, our mission is to raise awareness for the current state of neglect of the park and by advocating on this behalf. We also want to engage with all partners who can make a difference in rendering the park to an acceptable level of care, maintenance, and accessibility for all to enjoy. As you can see from the photo, the park is quite vulnerable to erosion. It's really a point guarded by a wharf and a bit of a barrier wall at the back. If the wharf is not fixed, then we are in a precarious position here, so. Pondville Beach through the years, Pondville Beach was designated a park in 1984 and has been enjoyed by locals and visitors alike. It continues to be one of the primary natural areas for active living and the main tourist attraction on Ilma Dam. Friends gather there in the summer for activities and for recreation and relaxation. Family have, you know, beach days. They welcome their friends and relatives from away. And the recreation, the Sandcastle Building Project, or I guess annual event, is always something that's well-attended. And we use it for beachcombing, for walking, for running, and for relaxation. We're not alone in our mission. We have a really well-attended Facebook page. We have many, many likes on our petition, and we've had 617 completions of our survey to date. So we're very pleased with the fact that it's well-followed and that people are really engaged in what's going on at the beach. Our survey has given some information, namely that 68% of those who completed were from Richmond, 36% are households with children, 33% have at least two visits per year, and 41% visit the beach all year long. The Active Living Strategy for Richmond has key components and best practices, and some of those initiatives fall well with the beach. That it be local, that it be all-inclusive, that it be for all ages, that it uses community assets, that it be accessible, that it uses nature-based opportunities, things like cycling, parks, trails, walking, and that it be affordable for everyone, to name a few. Pondville Beach falls in most of those categories with the exception of accessibility, as currently it is not an accessible region. Recreation is one of the most important reasons that the park is used. Many land-based activities are possible that do not require lifeguard services and that support the active living initiative being adopted by the municipality of Richmond. Things like yoga on the beach, walking programs, beach volleyball, kite-making and flying, painting in the park, mental wellness retreat, children's day camps, family fun days and picnics, scavenger hunts, and guided nature tours, to name a few. 56% of those who filled the survey said that they use the beach for relaxation and meditation. 55% of respondents said that they use it for recreation and exercise. 95% of the respondents use the beach for walking, 64% for swimming, 63% for sunbathing, and the new highest, next highest, is 8.5% using the beach for SUP and kayaking. Many, 48%, would like to see swimming lessons at the beach, 52% would like to see beach volleyball, and 57% would like to see walking programs. Accessibility support, removing barriers and creating an accessible beach for everyone would involve certain changes at the beach, wharf repairs being one of the main ones, that the wharf be stabilized and earmarked for an accessible viewing activities platform. Amenities such as accessible picnic tables and benches, accessible washrooms and Mobi mats, other amenities, bike racks. It's inaccessible if you have no place to safely guard your $1,500 bike, or your $500 bike, or your $200 bike, or whatever size it is. Garbage and recycling bins, and dog dispensers. 76% of respondents did not have a problem with accessibility, but 17% said they would not be able to access the beach. Of the remaining 7.4%, which were mainly comments, many said that although they had no accessibility problems, that family and friends did, and therefore they could not take them to the beach. Educating for Habitat Safety and Compliance, creating awareness about the importance of preserving and protecting beaches through clear and concise messaging, visual representation, engaging content for adult and children, interactive elements, and a call to action. 85% of respondents said no when the question to whether or not there was protection for natural ecosystems on the beach. Many spoke of protecting the dunes, educating about the adverse effects of motorized vehicles on the dunes, and many, many spoke about the fact that the wharf was a danger to the health and well-being of people on the beach. When we traveled, we went to the beach often, and there was always a panel for children in the parks. And it was sort of like a soft-touch, you know, take-in-take-out kind of idea where the kids could go and do a treasure hunt, and they would take pictures of the things they found that was on this panel. And then there was a QR code where they could download their pictures, and they would get sort of a star for being, you know, ambassadors for the park. So it's just a cute way to have them not touch anything and still have fun. As much as we are passionate about the beach, we can't do this alone. We need our partners, and we believe in a collaborative approach and have identified the following groups as partners for our efforts to ensure Pondville Beach Provincial Park is accessible to all and preserved for generations to come. The two most important proponents to that is the municipality of Richmond and the Department of Natural Resources and Renewables. The federal government, Destination Cape Breton Tourism Nova Scotia and Visite Nouvelle Côte as our tourism partners. Health and safety for seniors, Department of Community Services, Nova Scotia Nature Trust, and the Nature Conservatory of Canada. To note that the meeting for the Department of Natural Resources is on June 21st at Red the Rocky Bay Hall from 6:00 to 8:00, for those who would like to have their voices heard through that department. We didn't get to where we are overnight, and we're not going to be an overnight fix either. It's going to take time, commitment, planning, execution, to get all the pieces back in place. And we have to start somewhere, and there's a role for everyone. The Department of Natural Resources and Renewables, to remove barriers by adding amenities to improve accessibility, to schedule regular maintenance and cleaning of the park, to fix the wharf, and to ensure that best practices are used in the rejuvenation of the dunes. Municipality of the County of Richmond, to plan weekly recreational land-based activities at Pondville Beach, and to ensure that the Department of Natural Resources provides a letter, a letter, a L O A. You can help me with that one.
Letter of authority.
Thank you. To ensure that they are able to use the park. To fund and purchase any equipment required to make the activities accessible for all. The community, support the municipality's efforts by attending recreational programs, by sharing events on social media platforms, by engaging with the Department of Recreation on ideas and participate in surveys, and respecting beach rules, no ATVs, stay off the dunes. How can the municipality help with this? Clear and simple is what we tried to do here, and we gave a three-year scope as to how things could unroll. This year, this summer, to acquire a letter of authority from DNRR to hold weekly activities on the beach. Those can be pop-ups. They can be for kids, for adults, they can be learning activities, they can be science-based, it can be anything at all. And to ensure that the wharf is used in those platforms as well, as an activity platform. To correlate and hold the First Annual Beach Ecosystem and Environmental Impact Session to raise awareness of the purpose of the dunes and the negative impacts of ATVs and the beach. To involve the ATV riders associations in the county, not just the Ilma Dam ones, for the importance of that. In 2024, by the summer of 2024, to purchase and provide Mobi mats to render access to the beach, to the wharf from the parking area. To provide equipment and supplies to support additional activities as identified by staff and the community. By the summer of 2025, to add a short ramp and Mobi mat to access the beach from the top of the wharf. Hopefully by then, the Department of Natural Resources will have remediated the portion of the wharf that's now unable to be used. To provide staff to teach youth and adults the proper kayaking and canoeing techniques and SUP skills. Could be a two-hour session once a week, or a couple of times a week, depending on the engagement. To correlate with the Department of Natural Resources to determine the best position of an accessible kayak launch pad. Those are molded plastic or wooden pads with arm-supured little rollers on them so that the kayaks can go in and out. It's hard to get in and out of a kayak if you're able bodied. It's almost impossible for people who have mobility issues. And to provide rentals for kayaks and SUPs. I'm not talking 20, I'm talking three or four that could start and see what the interest is for that. It's interesting to note that the 8.5% of those who use SUPs and kayaks now, 52 persons that was, do access it from the park or from their own homes across the channel of water. It's really what we can do with that park, as it lends itself well to that with the protected pond on one side, the channel, and then the access to the ocean on the other. Thank you very much for the ability to present. Sorry for my "not very good getting you to where we are" etiquette. I guess the last question is, are you in? Is the municipality of Richmond able to offer some support to these initiatives and in a concrete fashion?
Okay, thanks, Lisa. You know, and I think I can probably answer the question of "are you in?" pretty succinctly because we've, yes, we've already said that we are in. So we're going to start with the letter to the province, and definitely didn't want to send that before tonight, just to make sure, you know, that we weren't going to be missing any important points, so we'll...
Save my next question.
Yeah. So, yeah, so now that we've got this under our belts, we will draft that. I do have a list of the points that you provided, and I think it's the right list. So just to make sure, I'm going to send you a draft of the letter first. You can maybe take a peek, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
You know, and again, just knowing that some things are municipal sort of responsibility, some things are provincial responsibility, you know, we're just going to kind of keep that in mind when we're requesting them to consider certain actions, so.
Yes, and we recognize that.
Yeah.
That some of them may be a combined.
Yeah.
Where both parties have to be on board, so.
Right. Okay, any questions for Lisa on this item? Okay. I think we've got the info we need to march forward, so.
Wonderful.
We'll do so.
Thank you very much, yes.
Thanks for your time, and great presentation. Can I just do a little shout-out to Maxine David for some of those pictures? Because she's been posting them on the Facebook group, too, and she does a great job on the pictures.
Yeah, a shout-out to Shauna Austin.
Yes.
Who actually put the presentation together.
Oh, well, there you go. Lots of collaborators on this one. Okay, thanks a lot, Lisa, and thanks also to the members in the gallery who came here this evening. Looking forward to getting the ball rolling with the letter off to the province as a step one. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a presentation by Cassia Regne, I think I'm pronouncing that properly, from the Food Cycle Science Corporation regarding the future of food waste and municipal impact. So Cassia, welcome to Richmond County's Committee of the Whole meeting. We'll hand the floor over to you. If you can maybe confirm that you can hear us okay, that would be great.
Absolutely. Good evening. Thank you so much for welcoming me tonight. I will go ahead and share my screen. May I please request permission to share my screen?
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, you should be able to share now.
Wonderful. And may I confirm that everyone can see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Well, good evening, warden, members of council and staff. Thank you very much for welcoming me this evening. My name is Cassia, and I'm a municipal program coordinator with Food Cycle Science. And I'm here to discuss a new type of food waste program for the municipality of the County of Richmond. So Food Cycle Science is a Canadian company. We're based in Ottawa in Ontario, and we're 100% focused on finding food waste diversion solutions. We do this with our innovative technology called the Foodcycler. And we offer these solutions directly to consumers through partners like Vitamix and Revel, to classrooms, through non-for-profit organizations, and to municipalities through our Foodcycler Municipal Solutions Division. We've received funding from the federal government for municipalities, and we wanted to invite all Canadian municipalities to have the opportunity to learn more about our programs. So the problem with food waste is that it's avoidable, it accounts for a large portion of our household waste, and it's made up of mostly liquid, which is, of course, heavy and freezes in the winter. On top of that, when food waste is either sent to landfills or contaminates green bin programs, it's responsible for generating really harmful greenhouse gas emissions like methane. And so all of these factors make it so that food waste is a problem that, of course, has a strong municipal effect. And so, of course, this is true whether food goes in the garbage or the green carts. The problem is financial, it's environmental, it attracts animals, and of course, like I said, when it's not disposed properly, it produces methane. So when we present our solutions, people often ask us, "Haven't we solved this before?" And as you know, there are green bins, and green bins are expensive, participation rates are historically pretty low and variable throughout seasons. There are issues with contaminations, and here in Ottawa, we've had green bins for about a decade, but only about 56% of the population reports having used it by time in the last year. So at FCM, just a few weeks ago in Toronto, we actually had the opportunity to speak with several other municipalities in Nova Scotia who say that they've been facing challenges with their green card programs, so seems to be a universal thing. Many people in your community might back their compost, and we think it's a good solution, and we encourage people to do so. Unfortunately, it's not feasible for everyone. Not everyone has the know-how, the space, or the desire to do so. And there's still a concern with bears and other animals. And then finally, the easiest solution is to landfill organic, but of course, your community is already not doing that, and we can't keep doing it. It's not sustainable or affordable. And so this evening, I'd like to introduce the Foodcycler. And so what the Foodcycler is, is an indoor composting alternative. It's electric, and so really easy to use. All you do is you put your food waste into the removable bucket, you add your bucket to the Foodcycler, and you press start. And then in about four to eight hours, so overnight, you get a dry, sterile soil amendment-type product that you can add to your garden. So you can see it here. You can add it to your garden, you can add it to a green bin, you can add it to a community composting program. We have certain farms that accept the byproduct. But essentially, what we're seeing is a 90% reduction in the initial volume of food waste. It's really efficient. It uses about a kilowatt hour for the entire cycle, which is very negligible in cost at the end of the month in your utility bills. And so, like I said, it's very energy-efficient, and it processes food waste in about four to eight hours. And so the machine can be used anywhere where there's a bug. Most people will store it in their kitchen, but others will store it in their basement or perhaps that heated garage. And so in our pilot programs, we have two models available. We have one that is two and a half liters, and the other has a five-liter bucket capacity. Both transform this food waste into that sterile soil product overnight, so again, it's up to eight hours' time. And I mentioned several uses for the byproducts, so like I said, people will use it in their garden, but people have gotten very creative with how they use it. So we've had people who've politicized it to use it as a home heating alternative or donate to their friends and family who like to garden. And so from an environmental standpoint, the Foodcycler is a net-negative carbon solution. So what that means is like using solar panels and planting trees, when you're using the Foodcycler to avoid bringing food waste to the landfill or avoiding any type of contamination, you're avoiding more greenhouse gases than you're creating in the process. And the same cannot be said for other municipal operations, such as waste facilities or waste and recycling collection services, which rely on largely emitting vehicles. And so in addition to the environmental impact, the traditional method of managing waste or organics is really a burden system that has unrelenting costs that increase every year. There's trucking, there's labor, there's maintenance, but the Foodcycler is really a decentralized approach that avoids unnecessary additional costs, the additional emissions from trucking and improper food waste breakdown, and any infrastructural costs to the municipality and its residents. And so one thing we've learned from working with municipalities is that residents are very interested in being part of the solution. They want to try new things, they want options, and they want their government to bring these solutions to their communities. And so we have completed over 50 pilot programs in municipalities across Canada, and the rest are all in progress, and the results have been overwhelmingly positive so far. So we have a really high participation rate, and we're able to achieve a lot of net-new waste diversion. Many municipalities have expanded their programs to more households within the community after the initial pilot program. So for example, in Nelson in British Columbia, after two successful pilot programs, they are implementing a Foodcycler in every single household in their city of 11,000 people. And of course, municipalities are saving on their waste management costs, and some communities have actually reduced the frequency of their organics collection services. So like I mentioned, a few months ago, we received the funding from the federal government, so we received $400,000 that we are distributing to municipalities across the country who wish to launch a pilot program. And we're currently in the running to get $1.5 million from the government, which we would further invest to our partners. And so here is the structure of a typical pilot program. So it's a 12-week program. Residents start by purchasing a Foodcycler at a subsidized cost from the municipality. They use the unit, they track the number of cycles they complete per week, and at the end, residents get to keep the Foodcycler, and we ask them to complete a brief survey so that we can evaluate the program's success. The results are then presented back to you in a final report or feasibility study, if you will. And then this data can be used to support any future waste management decision-making or can a company, either a recommendation or grant application to expand the program. And we offer the final report and grant writing and marketing, all as part of the cost of the pilot program. And so the funded pilots work based on a shared subsidy model, where we, Food Cycle Science, provide a discount, and we add in the federal investment from Impact Canada, which I will mention should be available for another month or so, to really get that price down by 50%. And then we ask that the municipality subsidizes the cost by $100 per household, or rather we suggest the municipality invest $100 per household. It differs based on the municipality and whether they want to invest more or less. And then participating residents choose which model best suits their household and contribute the remaining amount. So this way, everyone has some skin in the game, like we say, and this is where it's really well-lit up far. And of course, after the 12-week pilot, the Foodcycler is there to be. And so here we have some pilot-sized recommendations. So for a municipality of your size, we would recommend about 100 households to start, and these are recommendations based on our experience. And so this evening, we ask that you kind of receive our presentation as information, and should there be any interest in partnering, we ask that you refer this to staff for a report and recommendation. And we would welcome your municipality as a partner in this program, and I would welcome any questions, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Cassia. That was really succinct and really informative. We appreciate you. We have a large agenda, so appreciate you respecting the time in that way, but really interesting program. And I'm sorry, like I was trying to keep track of everything. So the funding that you've received for this municipal program, is it from the federal government? Is it FCM?
Thank you for your question. So it is the federal government, but it's not FCM. It's through Impact Canada.
Impact Canada.
It's through the Canada's Food Waste Reduction Challenge.
Okay.
With Agriculture Canada as well, I think, as a partner.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions for Cassia? Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering about a time frame on this, just considering we've just completed our budget for this year. How long do you expect, I guess, those options to be available at that price point?
So at this price point, we, so it's that $400,000 that we're currently investing into our communities. We should have some of that funding available for another month or so. However, should we be successful at the end of the year for that $1.5 million, we would then be further distributing the funding. But our pilot programs will be available until all municipalities in Canada have the chance to complete a program.
Okay.
Thank you for your question.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so for me, when you look at these two options, these are household options. I can't help, I'm in the food service industry, so I can't help but ask. When it comes to like commercial size or restaurants, I'm sure that, like, the food service business would be very interested in something like this, right? So is there any options there other than these two options, or like commercial-wise, Is there any options there other than these two options, or like commercial-wise or anything?
Thank you for your question. Absolutely, the food service industry is a big contributor to food waste, and we do have commercial options available. However, for our municipal pilot programs, it's the residential units. And I will add, setting up the big commercial machines involve a little bit more maintenance, they have to be set up with proper drainage, but the residential solutions are really just onsite once they're there, they're good to go. But absolutely, and I'd be happy to share more information on those as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one quick one.
Okay, Councillor Melanie Sampson has a question for you, Cassia.
Just wondering if there are any municipalities in Nova Scotia who have participated, who are participating in the pilot?
Thank you for your question. So not at the moment. We've actually just begun our conversations with municipalities in Nova Scotia in the last few weeks. But I will add that we are very happy to share that we have a municipality in Newfoundland and Labrador now, and two in New Brunswick that have just joined, so just starting on the east coast, but looking forward to having some in Nova Scotia very soon.
Great.
Thank you.
Are they waterproof? I noticed the, they're electrical, but I guess, you know, like anything else, can it be set outside or on your step or on your patio, or did it have to be rained?
Thank you. Thank you for your question. So the machine is not waterproof. We definitely encourage to keep it inside, or in a heated garage, it's perfect, or just a regular garage in the summer, but it's an appliance that can't be exposed to a terrain, unfortunately, but that would be, would be a really good idea.
Okay. Well, thanks, Cassia. At this time, councillors, do you want to consider the information as something we could ask staff to investigate?
Yeah, because really, the volume isn't that great.
Yeah.
Like on the municipality side.
Yeah. So Cassia, I don't, you know, I don't know how you, you know, the order in which you're approaching municipalities, but I like to think that Richmond County is well-known for good practices when it comes to waste management, and so this kind of fits right in with that. And so we'll, you know, kind of interested to look into it further. So would council be supportive of that? I'm seeing a few nodding heads around the table.
Yeah, for sure.
So maybe I'll ask for a motion to refer this back to staff for further investigation. Thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councillor Mike Diggden. Any further discussion on that item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried. So Cassia, I think you can look forward to some contact from staff in the future. We don't know where this will go, but definitely worth looking into from our perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a great rest of your evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is, I have a couple of items under my name. First is a review of the Warden's Council Report. I don't want to apologize to councillors, I forgot to do it last week, so I only slammed it together today. But that's why it was late in the agenda package, but it is there now for your review. I did want to mention, just briefly, a couple of specific items, because there've been some developments, and I wanted to just say some thank yous as well. So you'll notice on the report, a May 10th Housing Matters, Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition meeting was held. We held that in Lewistale, right, you know, within our county. It was our first in-person session since COVID began, and was really a day designed to re-energize our activities. And I just wanted to say publicly a thank you to Cheryl McDaniel and Rowan Hart for helping in the planning of that, and all the people who attended. It included specially-made muffins for each one of the attendees of the session, because there's no better way to re-energize people around a topic than provide them with some sugar, right? So that's what. I also wanted to say, to note, just in terms of if anyone watching or here in the gallery is interested in attending Superport Days, that all the planning meetings that you're seeing on that, on that report has paid off. Unfortunately, the event is already sold out for those who are still looking for tickets, but you can still participate in the supper, so that is an option, and you can just, you can access that information on our website. And I also wanted to take the opportunity, you will note in the report, a pile of activities that happened around Accessibility Week, and that was just an opportunity for me to give a shout-out right now to the staff here at the county, and also at the village of St. Peter's, because none of that would have happened without their efforts, and they did a bang-up job of the events. And last but not least, you'll note a couple of SEPI meetings on the report, and I just wanted to inform council that I'm taking on a role of co-chair with this committee to support the Chair, Mary Beth Doucette, as both Senator Dan Christmas and Councillor Paul McNeil are retiring, and we are stepping into some pretty big shoes there. So a little bit excited and a little bit terrified, but definitely worth the effort, so exciting times for SEPI. Any questions on the council report? On the Warden's report, sorry? Okay, I'm hearing none. I'll move on to the next item on the agenda. So this was the Acting Collectively Project. And as you know, I've brought it up for discussion here a number of times, but I wanted to give you a quick update, because the team, the Acting Collectively team is in Cape Breton, I think, this week, or was last week?
Last week.
Last week it was. And, you know, the recruitment of participants to do the research piece has been growing slowly. It is, it is a bit of a marathon, not a sprint. Collectively, in the three municipalities, they've completed a little over 120 assessments, which is just over a quarter of the project's initial recruitment goal. As of June 1st, 59, I think maybe now by today, it's 60 older adults have completed an assessment in Richmond County. So that number is almost 37% of the original recruitment target that we had here for the county. So just considering that one, almost one in three residents in Richmond County are 65 years and older, obviously, some of the, you know, the outcomes here are to assist the older adults who participate by providing them with individual care plans, which will try to connect them to the resources that they need, but also to understand the gaps in services where they don't exist, so that we can plan better as a municipality, and so that we can advocate to the province and the federal government for better services where gaps exist. So the challenge has been issued by the project team members to us as a council, the 5-5-5 Recruitment Campaign. They're asking five councillors, over the next five weeks, to find five people who would be willing to participate in the program, and that will help them reach their quota by the fall, and would ensure that they have people from all over Richmond County. So I will say, this is something that's important, is that we have geographic dispersion on the assessments that are conducted, so that we're not sort of only seeing data from one geographic location in the county. It'll give us a better picture. So I'm not going to ask for your commitment on the record right now, but I will ask you to consider the 5-5-5 Recruitment Campaign. Think about some older adults in your communities who may be, you know, good, you know, good examples of folks who could participate in this. They're asking that we mention it to, you know, family members, friends, neighbors, and invite them to take part, and also to get their name and number, and send it along to Jennifer at the Kingston Centre, who is registering the participants, and I have that contact information, so if anybody watching would like to participate, the number to call is 902-587-2800, extension four. And the person's name is Jennifer, and she'll take your call, and you can learn more about the project. So any questions on that item?
To help with that, Madam Chair, through you at council, if it's okay with you guys, we could send you a little snippet and an email tomorrow, just with all the information, so you have it in your email.
Sure.
And where to point people with the phone numbers and stuff like that.
That would be great.
Just to help out.
And if you present me three out of five, then that would even be better, and I'll pretty much.
I already recruited my parents for you, so.
Thank you very much.
I was gonna, I was gonna put five on the spot right now, which is gonna mean five.
Okay, well, you get the names together and talk to them about the project, and then send their information along, that would be really great. I will say, one thing that the project is not doing, is they're not doing blind calling or cold calling to, you know, older adults in our communities, because, you know, right from the outset, we recognize that, you know, it's not a great way to get good response, and I think it makes people kind of concerned that it might be a scam.
Right.
And, you know, so just to assure the public, this is not a scam. If you hear from Acting Collectively, it is a project that the county has been sponsoring, I guess, and hopes, hopes will give us some really good data. It's really hard to get local data at a very, you know, for rural areas about what's working and what's missing in our, in communities, so this is a really great opportunity.
I think it's also important to note, like, when we had our presentation on Acting Collectively, Sluska presented to us, Sluska and a few others, and I know that at the time, I just asked, you know, what could we do to help?
Yes.
And the comment was made, and I guess I would reinforce that, that, you know, if you have an older adult in your life, but they are maybe not able to necessarily answer all of the questions themselves, that you could sit with them.
Yes.
When the call happens, and sort of help to interpret the questions and interpret the answers. And so don't feel like if you, if you have somebody in your life who could provide some really valuable insight, that they shouldn't be participating, they're probably the group that needs participating the most, because they are gonna, that's where we're gonna find the services that people really need.
Absolutely. Care providers or family members are welcome to be part of those interviews, absolutely. Yep, great point, councillor. Okay, any further discussion on Acting Collectively? All right, I'll be following up with you at the end to see which five people you all referred, so.
Twenty-five each. Five weeks, five people. I was thinking it was five a week. Do you mean one a week?
Oh yeah, I mean five a week.
Yes, it's twenty-five.
The last one loved five a week. As many as you can, so they can reach the target in an appropriate amount of time would be great. Okay, so we'll move on from that item, and next, I'll hand things over to Deputy Warden Brent Sampson to have a conversation regarding waste receptacles.
So this is just referring back to, I think it may have been during budget discussions, we'd kind of discussed this informally, about a lack of waste receptacles in drive-throughs throughout the county and beyond, but I thought it may be something that we want to refer to bylaw and policy, to have a discussion around whether or not we want to look at a bylaw possibly mandating waste receptacles in drive-through, in places where drive-throughs are. We've heard from residents about litter and the effects it has, we all know the effect it has. So this may be something we can do, one small piece of the puzzle, to counteract that. So just looking to make a motion to refer to bylaw and policy to further discuss possibility of a waste receptacle bylaw regarding drive-throughs.
Awesome. Thank you, Deputy Warden. So he's made the motion to refer this to bylaw and policy for discussion. Could I have a second or on that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councillor Mike Diggden. Any further discussion on the waste receptacles? All right. Thanks for bringing that forward, Deputy Warden. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Perfect, okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is community acknowledgements. And of course, we're going to start off with our volunteer, in this case, Volunteers of the Month, Husband and Wife Team. Marie and Conrad Fugier of River Bourgeois have been selected as Richmond County's Volunteers of the Month. Together, Marie and Conrad are the epitome of a volunteer couple in their community. They're very active in their efforts, from cleaning the church to being dedicated caretakers of the visitation parlor. Conrad is the chairperson for the St. John the Baptist Graveyard Committee. Both he and Marie are often seen cleaning and repairing the stones during the summer months. Conrad has served on parish council and coached baseball and hockey for several years, while Marie was known to be the statistician for the sports teams that their sons participated in. So Marie can also be found volunteering and giving her time to the River Bourgeois Festival dinners and potluck suppers, as well as visiting the nursing home at the Richmond Villa, and providing baked goods for community events and neighbors. Yeah, so I would just ask that everyone please join us, and recognizing the hard work, dedication, and commitment of Marie, that Marie and Conrad provide to their community, we thank you for all you do in Richmond County. We have a little gift that we're going to be presenting to you, so Marie and Conrad will be in touch. I'm looking forward to connecting and providing you with a little package of thanks on behalf of the municipality, so. Are there any other community acknowledgements that we wanted to do this evening?
We always look at Councillor Sampson.
Well, I'm going to steal his thunder, because I would just like to congratulate the organizers of the ball tournament that happened here. I'm sorry, I know Councillor Sean Sampson, ball is kind of your bailiwick, but I'm stealing because, oh, see that? See the pun I did there? I'm gonna steal that base and say congratulations to Janik and all of the organizers, they did a great job, and I, like, the weather actually kind of seemed to cooperate, and the opening ceremonies were fantastic, with all of the eight teams out on the, out on the field in Pettit de Grau with their signs, and ready to take on the tournament, so it was, it was really fantastic. But I know you need to speak on this, so I'm gonna hand it over to you.
That's okay. Yeah, so I wanted to start as well. So our local schools had their awards, banquets the last couple of weeks or so, so just wanted to congratulate all the students for their awards and, you know, their hard work and dedication when it comes to academics and sports and all that stuff. So just wanted to acknowledge them and congratulate them, and wish them well in their future endeavors. Also wanted to congratulate and acknowledge, of course, the softball teams that did go away.
Yes.
So the Richmond Academy softball team, boys, went to Cannon Cook for the weekend. The Richmond Academy ladies played in Judic, and the Kalabawore boys went to Sheed Harbour. And of course, the tournament you just spoke of in Pettit de Grau was the Kalabawore girls. So just want to acknowledge all those coaches and players and schools and staff, and, you know, they represented our county and their schools very well, so just wanted to congratulate and acknowledge them.
Yes.
And I did make it home in time for the closing ceremonies.
Oh, did you? I'm glad.
So yes, so again, I do want to acknowledge, like you said, Madam Morton, Janik, and Cindy Wilson, and the rest, Chatale Haley, and the rest of the organizing community, you can't name them all, but they know what they are, and just, if there's one thing that Pettit de Grau and Almedan does right, it's baseball, you know.
I'd suggest all of Richmond County does that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. When it comes to that, Richmond Amateur Baseball Association League and everything, yeah, we're passionate about baseball. And I might be biased, I've traveled the province all my baseball career, and I may be biased, but that ball field in Pettit de Grau is one of the best, right?
It's fantastic, and you know, good opportunity to shout-out to the community volunteers who maintain that field, because I do believe they were pumping the water off of it the night before, to make sure that it was, it would be playable, you know? There may have been ducks in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So well done to the folks who did that work. A lot of, a lot of young, you know, young women were counting on being able to play, and without their efforts, it wouldn't have been possible, so.
Yep, so hats off to all of them for sure.
And I'd also like to mention that I attended the NSCC convocation, as I know you did as well, of course, Councillor Melanie Sampson, on Thursday evening. I took, I think, a picture of every Richmond County graduate that crossed that stage. If they're going to allow me to sit in the front row, I feel I have a responsibility to take some pictures and put them online for people who have to sit a little further back. So if you don't see those on my Facebook page, I apologize, I tried to capture as many as I could. But there were lots of grads from Richmond County, so it was good, it was a great turnout, yeah. Congratulations to all the graduates there as well. All right, any other community acknowledgements? June is always a busy one for that. Things are wrapping up, and we're getting ready to head into summer, so. Okay, so here and then, I'm going to move us on to correspondence. We have a few items under Action Required, and the first is, this is sort of the CFO Jason Martel section of the agenda, there's a lot of memos going on, so thanks for your work on all of this, CFO Jason. But the first is, I guess, an extension request from the Ayrshire Community Development Association. They had experienced a delay in the work that they planned to do, are now looking for an extension to March 31st, so this was a grant that was approved, I think, the last year, or?
Two years.
Maybe the year before. It's two years. This is why it's coming back to council for approval as per our policies, so. Could I have a motion to, you know, if folks are in favor of this, to approve the Ayrshire Community Development Grant Extension Request for an additional year to March 31st, 2024? Or if there's any concerns with that, we could discuss now.
I'll make that motion.
Councillor Mike Diggden has made the motion. Could I have a second or please?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Councillor Sean Sampson has seconded the motion. Any further discussion on that item? And maybe Troy, before we pass the motion, I'll just ask, was there any particular comments or issues that staff would like to bring up?
None that were brought forward.
Okay, perfect. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a piece of correspondence from the Almedan Fire Department regarding piles of brush in fields, and essentially, a request to remove them. Like, I'm just gonna ask councillors around the table, and I guess particularly yourself, Councillor Diggden, this was a letter from Norma Budrow, and I'm just wondering if you would have any background context, and we're not, it doesn't really indicate which fields and, you know, who would own these fields.
No, I think it's just a general letter, you know, about the, if you pass through people's property, you still, you know, where the, you know, you might have got Nova Scotia Power, or Bella Line, or anybody that was cutting trees at that time or clearing. You might have got Nova Scotia Power or Bell Alliant or anybody that was cutting trees at that time or clearing, Department of Transportation, you know. I guess it, it all might have been stuff that was left behind. I, as, I guess it's something that we really can't police. And, uh, I don't think we really want to, you know, I, I've had a few phone calls and I just, you know, I just told the property owners that it's something that the county can't take on. That, you know, their property is, is their property and therefore they, if they would like, they would like it cleaned up, it's almost something that they have to do themselves. Or, you know, like, and I don't want to throw names out there, but there's contractors in our, in our community that can definitely help take care of them. And, you know, if they want to reach out, maybe to the municipality, we can provide them with names of contractors in their area.
Okay, uh, councillor Melanie?
I mean, I'm just, I'm mostly concerned with her, like, closing line, which says, looking forward to receiving a reply from you with regards to this matter ASAP. And I mean, I think to councillor Diggden's point, like, our response is that if it's on private property, it's the property owner's responsibility to clean it. I think that if there are particular areas where perhaps it's been NSP or Alliant or whomever who's cleaned the, cleaned the brush out. Or, and not picked up the piles, like, I just remember back to a time when they did some, uh, clearing on McCackern Road, right? And, and I think you had brought it forward, we contacted Alliant and the next week, everything was picked up, right? So, if, if there was more detail, then perhaps, you know, the warden could send a letter or we could make a phone call to the appropriate bodies. To say, hey, this is an issue of safety, can you clean it up? But I don't.
Yeah.
Other than that, I don't know what action we can take, right? If it was our property.
It happened a couple of weeks ago, actually, coming up the side of our property. And it was, uh, Nova Scotia Power who had, uh, cut the trees at that time. And, uh, I phoned, I personally phoned Nova Scotia Power and, uh, within a day or two, they, they had the, and they were aware, the gentleman just thought that they had all been picked up. But they weren't, so he sent a crew in and cleaned them up. So, yeah, to your point.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe I would make a motion, uh, that we asked you to re, to reply to, um, to Norma. Just to indicate that if it's on private property, that they should, that it's the private, that's the person's responsibility. But she had specific instances where it was Nova Scotia Power, you know, and, and a, a larger entity, if you will, that.
Yeah.
To contact them or if they felt they would, if they weren't getting anywhere doing it themselves, that perhaps reach back to us and we could send a letter.
So this, this letter was addressed to you, Troy. Would it be more appropriate?
Oh, yes, of course, yeah.
And then I'm giving government to government, so I'm fine with it coming from.
Okay, yeah, great.
Okay.
So, um, I will make that motion then.
So the motion would be to ask staff to reply to Norma, indicating, you know, our limitations on private property. And that if, uh, as you, as you say, a larger entity had caused the, the issue, to contact them directly.
And, and maybe we want to get that info out to the public as well. Councillor Diggden said he called Nova Scotia Power himself.
Yes, that's right.
So if we can make it public to the residents that have problems with Nova Scotia Power or Bell Alliant, maybe.
Well, coupled with a kind of an awareness post on Facebook.
Okay, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Great.
Okay, so, um, I think we have enough detail in the motions. The motion is for, uh, staff to, uh, reply to Ms. Boudreau. To, um, you know, to outline the limitations on private property for the municipality to take any action. And to provide, um, the, you know, information on who to contact, should a larger entity have been responsible for the piles of brush. Okay, could I have a second on that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Uh, any further discussion?
Yeah, one other thing, yeah, just, uh, I'm not sure how many entities there might be, if it's only the two at the moment. But there was a lot, Nova Scotia Power did a lot of clearing around the line. However, uh, I ran into a situation where, um, we were under the impression, we thought it was that. As it turned out, once it was investigated, it was, or, no, sorry, it was Nova Scotia Power originally. We had thought some of it has been for the fiber op, for running the fiber op internet. So, so there are some areas where it actually isn't Nova Scotia Power.
Yeah.
It would be contacting Bell. So it, it, it could be one of those two or possibly, you know, some situations, there could be other kinds going on. But, um, just to clarify that it may not be solely Nova Scotia Power.
And, uh, if I may add that, uh, some of it may just be fallen trees that they're concerned about, you know, so that we don't end up with the, again, you know. I can't speak on, I can just speak on what I know, I guess, and I would say that the, uh, you know, the municipality doesn't have the funds available to clean all the fallen trees within our. Whether it be on private property or government property.
We don't have the authority to do that.
No, but even if it's on, it's crown property, we still may not have the authority, but we wouldn't have the, we also wouldn't have the funding available to.
I will tell you, I sh- I share her concern. There's a lot of dead wood in, in the woods here in this county. And I know last week, you know, in the heat of the, again, pardon the pun, but in the heat of those, the, the worst of those fires on the mainland. You know, my, my mind was moving towards, maybe we need to go bag here too. And I, you know, think about the woods behind my house, but I totally share the sentiment. Guess we would be looking to, um, owners of properties, so to, you know, to make those outreaches.
And I, I guess to that point, before we pass the motion or finish the motion, I would, uh, I would add, anybody that has property with trees that have fallen. There's lots of people or woodcutters that are out there looking for wood. So maybe reach out to somebody who do, actually don't have their own property or land to cut wood on and may be more than happy to go and clear it for free. So, I, I, you know, everybody's, the cost like everything else is going up, so it may be something that you get your yard cleaned up and.
It's a good idea, for sure.
Everybody wins.
Yeah. Okay, um, so any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hey, that motion is carried. So the next item on the agenda is a grant request from the Lewesdale and Area Food Bank Society.
So before we get started, I will, uh, excuse myself from the conversation just because my family has a quote in on the project, so.
Okay, thank you councillor Melanie Sampson.
Thank you.
Could we please note in a minute that Melanie has, uh, councillor Melanie Sampson has stepped out of the room? Um, so Lewesdale Food Bank is seeking a five thousand dollar contribution towards creating a space, um, within, I believe it was the Lions Club building. I mean, uh, loading, there we go. To, to house the food bank and, and, you know, it's, it's quite a chunk of money. But I will say that, uh, I guess Lillian's note about how it's housed in her laundry room right now, really brings home the fact that, you know. We, we contribute yearly to the food banks, but I think at the end of the day, I believe Lewesdale may be the only one without a physical space. Is there another one? Okay. Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, and I just was made aware of it two weeks ago.
Where is it?
So the food bank for District One Two, um, is looking for a new location.
But they have one now. It's not if somebody's.
Well, they have one, but they're. They have, they have to vacate, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, but this, in this case, they've never had a space, right? So, um, anyway, I just wanted to make that clear because I, you know, I'm not sure I fully understood exactly how that was working before. So, great point. So I will just open this for discussion, um, for council. Any thoughts on this one?
Well, I'm, you know, you know, Lillian, right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, God bless our heart, you know, housing, you know, a food bank in, in our laundry room, like you said, right? So, I mean, I think this is important, uh, an important project. And, you know, I think we should look closely at the, trying to get as close to this five thousand as we can, right, and help this project for sure.
Yeah. Just in terms of the math on this one too, they are looking to, you know, five thousand represents about a, a fifth, almost a fifth. Maybe a little more than a fifth of, uh, the total project. They, you know, for a food bank society, like I will say, they do seem to have a healthy balance. They've got a retained earnings of, uh, a little over twelve thousand dollars. So they're, they're also looking to put in a chunk of that towards this project as well, so to put five thousand in on their own. So just, I wanted to provide that as some additional context. Um, any other comments on this one?
No, I, I guess I would, uh, yeah, I would tend to agree. It's, uh, it's pretty hard to, you know, it's pretty hard to turn down a food bank. And it's pretty hard, uh, you know, hats off to the lady for giving up. And I believe it was, it wasn't like one or two years, it was like.
It's many years.
Many, many, many years, like double-digit years that, uh, she opened her house to the, uh, to the food bank or to provide as a food bank. So, again, I, yeah, I don't know how we, uh, I don't know how we solve the problem, but I would be willing to.
Okay, so I think councillor Sean, you're indicating you would support this request to the tune of five thousand?
Yeah, I s- yeah, yeah, for sure.
Councillor Diggden?
The same.
The full, and deputy warden?
Most definitely, yeah.
Okay, so I think the question comes down to how we would allocate it?
I would take the five thousand hundred, councillor Melanie Sampson.
Sure, I'm sure you would.
No, but in all seriousness, I mean, I'm sure that, uh, you know, we can look at our regional fund for sure, I know that.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't be comfortable with suggesting anything out of the district fund. I don't think that would be appropriate.
No.
So I, I would be in favor of just using the regional fund.
Okay. So, um, could I get a motion to that effect then, please?
So moved.
Thank you. So the motion, the motion, uh, is from deputy warden that we support the funding request from the Lewesdale Food Bank. Of five thousand dollars from the regional fund. Um, could I have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. So again, sorry, uh, CAO, I'm gonna just ask, any staff, uh, red flags, issues or comments? No?
No.
Okay, great, thank you. And so, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. I think we can bring councillor Melanie Sampson back into the room. Uh, for the next item on the agenda. Okay, so the next item is a grant request from the River Bourgeois Community Services Society for the Type Four Regional Health General Grant Funds. In the amount of ten thousand dollars. And this is to complete upgrades to the hall. There was quite an extensive amount of information provided on this one. And so, it included replacing, um, I think some flooring, included replacing doorway. Which of course would have, you know, I guess be part of the accessibility, um, requirements that the community halls are all gonna have to be facing soon. And, so it looks like the overall, uh, project. Um, they've got, you know, they've got, uh, quotes in from several contractors. And, uh, they've noted that the costs come to, I think, product and labor of a little over twenty thousand, twenty thousand two hundred. Um, but they do get fifty percent of their tax back on that. So, um, they're seeking a, it looks like it's about a fifty percent, uh, which I know has typically been, um, sort of our threshold. Where we don't kind of go more than that. I, I will say it's, it's a lot of money for an early request in the fiscal year. Um, which makes me a little nervous. Um, but specifically, it will be replacement of flooring in the basement level of the Sarlin Center and the two steel door replacements. I do, like, I will say as well, the things that I know about that area of the building is they use it to stage a lot of their food production. And, um, and so any, any kind of, you know, you know, post-interment celebration of life type activities. I've seen happening down there, as well as some of the seniors' activities, et cetera. So, uh, so accessibility definitely would be an important feature here. But, uh, I would like to open it for discussion from councillors. I know, um, councillor Melanie, you had had some email back and forth on question. No, not with this one, that was a different one, okay. Um, so any, any comments or questions on this one?
So I guess the only one I would throw is I know there's been some grants tossed around in the past year. Um, accessibility as well as, uh, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna classify it as hall maintenance. But, you know, upgrades or whatever, uh, through the provincial government. And, um, I don't know if they've read, I'm hopefully, hoping they reached out to the province to see if there was funding available. But, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not su- I'm not sure I wouldn't have, I don't think we would have that information, CAO, yeah. Um, I don't think, there, so I will tell you right now, the, the community accessibility grants are not open right now. I, I don't believe, I think they closed in February.
Close as in for, to apply?
Yeah. I can tell you, I just had to look it up for, um, for another community organization, community accessibility program. Yeah, applications for the, this fiscal year were accepted until February fourteenth. So that program won't open again for the next fiscal year, which would be twenty-four, twenty-five, until probably the fall. Yeah. So. I, I don't know of any other programs that would help, but I maybe just am not a little, so councillor Melanie Sampson?
Um, I just noted, uh, I noted on their balance sheet and, and I believe they were, I'm trying to find the note, but I believe they were the organization who mentioned it in, in their application. About, about the, um, quantity of funds that they had in their balance sheet.
Yes.
Like the, the, the dollars that they have in terms of their bank account. Um, 'cause it, it's pretty substantial, you know, it's, it's in the six digits. Um, they did comment, um, how their, their designated funds in some of those. Um, but they haven't provided any kind of information in terms of designated for what purpose?
Yeah, I do know one of them, I believe the largest one is related to a fundraising effort that was undertaken. For a potential splash pad development. That's the one forty-four-ish.
Okay.
Um, I'm pretty sure that's what that one is because I remember the fundraising efforts, they were quite intensive. And I think the project could not proceed, probably due to a lack of water service at the, you know what I mean, in the locations that they were looking at. So, um, I, there may have been other factors as well, I'm not sure. But, um, and then there's, there's another one designated, it's specifically for Senetaph.
Yeah, but then there's one that's savings.
Hall savings, and I'm not sure about that one, yeah.
Um, the, so, I, I mean, my, uh, I'm not necessarily ready to say no a hundred percent. But I feel like I need, when, when an organization has that much money and the ask is so large, I'm.
Yeah, it is, it's a large one.
Just look for a little bit of extra.
For sure.
Context there, I think.
Yeah.
And I guess to your point, uh, councillor Diggden, you talked about accessibility pieces, but they, uh, again, I don't recall them talking about it. Making it more accessible, I just.
No, I'm, I'm inferring that because any upgrades that they would ha- do would have to be, right, for an entrance system, right? They're not gonna be, uh, with building codes, they're, they're gonna have to meet those accessibility.
Yeah, yes, but I mean, they're replacing a door that may already be accessible. I don't know, I'm just, okay, all right, I don't know, just asking the question.
It's the basement door, is it?
It's the basement door, yeah, yeah. I don't think there's a button or anything like that, like, and then the other entrance for it is there's a stairway. And then there's another entrance through a kitchen area that would not be accessible either, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's, and sorry, I, I should have mentioned that, that, you know, I don't think I saw that in the application either. But it was, uh, it would just be required as part of their changes. Um, I mean, you know, typically, the ten thousand, I will say, is, it's a lot. We've only, I think, done, we only did one at that. I don't even know if we did one at that amount last year.
Well, we did the pasture last year.
Yeah.
I think the pa- that was two years ago.
It's, okay, it's not two years ago from tonight, it's two fiscal years.
Yes.
It was the end of the fiscal year, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I went back and looked at that as well. Yeah, we had done a couple, um, in March twenty twenty-two.
I had a significant amount left in the.
Yes.
Yeah, in your district fund, yeah, 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 but we've not done a lot of ten, like.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, so, uh, councillor.
Are we able to, you know, I guess my suggestion would be to increase any kind of comfort level for me and any amount would be, like, are we able to reach out to them? To get the parameters around the reserved portion of the funds? Like, they, they must have some written documentation or something that says what they're designated for. Um, and bring it back to our regular council meeting? Like, or do we have to defer from committee of the whole? I never do quite remember that.
Well, I think in this case, we're getting ready to break for summer. We have, we have made the exception that we've taken it to a regular council in those cases. We just have been trying not to do that because we want the deliberation time between committee of the whole and regular council, right?
Yeah.
Um, so I will, I will ask the question though, just based on the balance sheet. Um, again, a little over two hundred thousand dollars that they've indicated is designated or, you know, restricted funds, I guess, for lack of a better word. Given their, um.
One seventy.
Well, is it one seventy? Sorry, my math is not good.
For instance, um, where it's forty-nine, one seventy-four, I think, which is in there, thirty-two thousand is it designated?
Yeah, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the small print here. Okay, so given that that amount is, uh, considered designated and we, when we look at what they have in their retained earnings, which is a little, like, two hundred and sixty thousand. Would understanding, like, if confirmation is received or we've got some additional information that, yes, that full amount is reserved. Would it re, would it result in councillors being interested in supporting the project, I guess, at the, at the ten thousand dollar level?
I, I wouldn't be interested in supporting at the ten thousand.
Okay, yeah.
I, I would be, I would, I would be okay, I guess, that's supporting somewhere, um, because I see the, and I shouldn't say it like that. But I see the door being a necessity over the floor. So, I guess if you had to break the project down, and maybe they see it the other way, the, the floor being the necessity over the door, I don't know. But, um, I think they. I think the, the door come in at like forty-six hundred plus tax.
Yeah, fifty-three hundred dollars.
So you, yeah.
So you'd be interested in supporting the project for the door of fifty-three hundred instead of?
Well, on half a thou-, you know, we usually do that.
Well, you're just picking an amount, basically, yeah. 'Cause they're, I think in all likelihood, they're probably going ahead regardless.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, you know, when I look back at the application, it, um, yeah, I can tell you the basement floor is not in the greatest of shape, just having, you know, spent some time in that room. But, um, I think the fact they've noted that the area is used for meals, and I, and I think it creates a little bit of, uh, so they're looking to change the type of flooring right now. I think it's a tile, um, and doesn't have any, uh, texture. Um, and it looks like they're going to, with a vinyl floor plank, uh, which is a commercial flooring, so. Um, it's put down with adhesive instead of interlock, so I think just improving the.
Yeah, so I guess regardless, I personally, I think I would be at the, uh, so. So their flooring code is coming in at twenty thousand? Or is that the flooring code, the door? No?
No, I, I had the total cost at like twenty-five thousand, about, uh, twenty thousand on the floor-ish and five on the door-ish.
The flooring codes are sort of written differently, like, one, if you notice, the seventy-five hundred for labor is not really into the total, even though it's written there below, and the other one's in the total, I believe.
Yeah.
Their, 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 their numbers are similar, it's just they're written out in a different way.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and when I was quoting those numbers before, it was, you're right, it was only the flooring piece. They've got above that the cost is of the, uh, door is fifty-three hundred dollars. So you add the two of those together with the twenty-one thousand, eight. So the ten thousand would be much, you know, quite a bit less than the fifty percent cap that we've been, you know, kind of established for ourselves in practice, although, um.
That door code is not including any labor to install it either, I don't believe, right?
No, that's right. That's right, so it's probably closer to a third.
So, yeah, that's.
That they're looking for.
Not a two-hour door.
No, I don't think it's a two-hour door.
No, like, those are, I'm light, I'm assuming this is a, looking at it, it's probably a double, um, they're like industrial-type doors. And we've used them in Mulgrave and some places, yeah.
Yeah. Right, so about a third of the cost they're looking for the municipality's assistance with? Um. Okay, I'm just trying to get a sense of, um, where folks would be comfortable once we learn more about the designated funds, just so we can be prepared for that.
And if the number was lower, then I might, like, it might be okay about the.
Right.
Designated funds in my, in my mind, right? You know, if we're talking about twenty-five hundred dollars, then I may be convinced to move along here, right? But.
Right.
If we're talking about five thousand or ten thousand, I, I'd like to see some thing that discusses what these funds are designated for.
Why they can't be freed up?
Ri- right, because, you know, again, like.
Well, I'm wondering if this evening, just to kind of speed things, not that, not that we're in a great hurry, as I said, we can take this to a council meeting, we could pass a motion conditionally upon receiving informa- you know, of, of whatever amount, conditionally upon receiving, uh, confirmation on what the purpose of designated, the designated funds were. If you wanted to proceed in that way, we could, or we could just leave it to our June, you know, end of June discussion, which is totally fine as well. Procedurally, those are our options.
Yeah, I think, I, I would prefer to, uh, personally, I would prefer to bring it back in June.
Okay.
Um, than to have just a confirmation of, because again, it comes to interpretation of what they think, and I think, and you think, and Councilor Melanie thinks, may all be interpreted four different ways, so.
Yeah, so, and maybe I'll just give you a little bit of, uh, you know, perspective from, you know, because this isn't a location in my district. I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with the ten thousand, it's early in the fiscal year, but again, also recognizing this is gonna be the time, as you can see from those in the list of grants, that, you know, most activities are happening, it's our construction season. Um, I'd be a little more comfortable, I, I, I have no question in my mind that if they have noted that these funds that are listed on their balance sheet are designated for a purpose, I fully trust that, that they are designated for a purpose and not accessible for this type of work. So I'm, I'm less concerned about that, just more concerned about the, just the full-on amount of it. And so I, I'm kind of considering, could, could we do maybe a seventy-five hundred dollar contribution? I think overall, that would take us a little closer to what, one-fifth of the cost, that, you know, they're gonna leverage some other monies out of that. Um. So that's where, that's where my mind is. Um, I'd like to see, you know, I'd, I'd put in maybe perhaps like a fifteen hundred from, um, a district fund, and look for the remainder to come from regional, if possible. Um, I just, I, I'm also very conscious of the fact that St. Peter's and area tends to be the home of many, many festivals, and I'm thinking there's gonna be more grant requests coming at, so that I will need the district funds for. Um, so I'm just kind of conscious of that as well. So that's where my head is, and I, like, ha- happy to discuss that, but, um.
Yeah, I, I was in, I was in the mind frame of like, maybe, you know, when you, when you look at the total cost of the, the twenty thousand for the flooring, and the, over five thousand for the, the door, you're at twenty-five thousand, I was thinking maybe twenty-five percent of the total project, right, which you're looking at maybe sixty-two, sixty-two fifty or so, right? But if you're willing to put your fifty-hundred amount or more into that, then, you know, that, that helps and get to your goal as well, right, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
So, I, I think my original one, that I was, you know, was half of the ten, the ten, so, again, I'm okay with the five, and then if you wanted to top it off with the fifteen, then I would be okay with the sixty-five hundred total.
Okay. Councilor Melanie?
Uh, I'm just, I'm still like a, a little uncomfortable, right? Again, when I look at their financials, they raised fifty-seven thousand in the twenty-two fiscal and chased the ace. Like, that, the money was said to be on hold, like, I just Googled it, and the intention of that was to be used for continual maintenance of the facility, right? Which is basically what we're talking about, and if I look, you know, like, last year, what was spent on the facility, that, you know, it's nowhere near fifty-some thousand, so if we're talking about dedicated funds, that's the kind of dedicated funds I think we're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
I, I'm just, I'm still a bit uncomfortable about, that I just don't feel like we have all the information, and it just could be, it could be recording, there's always a million things that could be different, like.
Yeah. Okay, so perhaps we could ask, uh, staff to request more information from, uh, the applicant about the designated funds, specifically, um, around funds raised for hall maintenance, um, and, you know, in the previous fiscal, and where, you know, where those are expended, or specifically if they would be applicable to this type of work in the hall, right?
Yeah, 'cause they do have money spent, like, for the ball field or whatever, so that could be what they meant when they were saying that, that's, you know, that's fine. I just feel like.
Okay, um, would folks be supportive of that, uh, request some additional information? Um.
I don't have any comment, but, uh, I would defer to the CFO to see.
Yeah, we can go back to the group, absolutely, and get some more information from them.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, specifically on the designated funds, just to better understand where those are coming from, and, and I think because this is hall, um, what I would think is hall maintenance and improvement, you know, funds raised in previous years, how that could apply.
Yeah, and like, where do they plan to get the rest of the money, right? Because if we were giving them ten, they still have fifteen to spend, and really, according to their financials, they only have about twenty-eight available to themselves, so that would wipe them out pretty good.
Yeah. Okay, great, um, and I guess note, note on these grant applications, for folks who may be watching, it would be really helpful, uh, I think, to understand the expense side, uh, but also the financing side, right? And I find sometimes when that's missing, it leaves us with a little bit of a hole in the information, and it's hard to make a decision. Um, okay, so, um, could we maybe get a motion to that effect, though, just so we have it on the action items list, um, that we refer this back to staff for additional information on designated funds?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, can, thank you, Councilor Diggden. Could I have a second, or please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Um, all right, so the next item on the agenda is a grant request from the Renest Furniture Society uh, for funds in the amount of six hundred dollars. And, um, I, there's some background information, I think, in the package. Uh, I will tell you that, um, we've been in touch with the folks, uh, who have put this society together because of my work with the Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition. Um, and so we now have in the region two housing support workers, uh, who work, I think, between Richmond County, Port Hoxbury primarily, maybe a little bit of areas on the outskirts of that as well. Um, and they have been trying to find places for people to live, uh, especially people who, you know, may be at a disadvantage, um, and, or in some kind of emergency situation, et cetera. Um, a lot of times the places they're finding, uh, there's a deficiency in furniture or no furniture. Um, so I know when my Aunt Sandy moved back to the west, we did a whole delivery of furniture from her house to the Renest Furniture Society, um, and that furniture is almost immediately deployed back out to households of people who cannot afford to buy a dresser or to buy a bed, specifically beds are not enough. So anyway, I just wanted to provide you with that background, um, and just open for discussion as to what councilor's thoughts are on this.
I think it sounds like a great idea.
Mm-hmm, agreed.
And for six hundred dollars? Uh, yeah, and I think it's something maybe even we want to, uh, advertise through the, uh, social media, like, 'cause I, I'm sure there's probably a lot of people that could use this that maybe aren't aware of it.
Yeah. And I think also advertising to have people donate items to.
Exactly.
Yeah, on both, on both sides.
I, I, um, yeah, I can think of somebody now that reached out a little while back for a specific purpose, and at the time wasn't gonna work out, but I think I'm gonna get back ahold of them based on this alone, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a great idea. I, I think, um, maybe we could ask a little bit, um, before we would advertise anything, I think maybe it would be a good idea to connect back with Lisa Q. and Chloe Fox, um, about how we could support them in, in their work, uh, in terms of marketing and promotion, 'cause we have lots of tools at our disposal as well, so, um, so if folks are okay with this, I'd suggest that perhaps it's a six hundred dollar contribution from the regional fund, um, and a request that's, that, uh, staff reach out to the applicants to find out how we could best some, support their goals through promotions.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be okay?
Wonder.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on the item? Oh, and I'm gonna defer over to our CFO again. I'm gonna try to make sure I don't go through these grants without asking you at least if you had any discussions internally.
Absolutely, and, uh, there, there were none noted in the memo to myself, but I will defer to the CFO in case he has anything that has come up between the time it was submitted to me and now.
Nope, nothing new.
Okay, great, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Thanks, everyone, we're getting there, we're almost halfway, I think. All right, the next, uh, grant request is, uh, from the Little Harbor Community Pastor, uh, for a ten thousand dollar grant, um, which is, uh, to the Deputy Warden's point he made earlier, uh, in the, not last fiscal year, but the previous fiscal year, we did fund an amount, uh, an amount of ten thousand dollars to them, it is what they are requesting again. Um, so I would open this one for discussion, um, if anybody would have any comments on this.
So, yeah, uh, the, the ten thousand would have represented roughly ten percent of the complete project they were looking to do. Um, however, in conversation I had with the CFO today, he may be able to better update.
Okay.
Uh, those numbers may not be as accurate.
Yeah, so they had applied for, in the application, they had applied for ninety-nine thousand, I think, from the province, and so I had been going back and forth with the group a little bit, and they told me since the package had been updated that they'd been approved for twenty-nine thousand, as opposed to ninety-seven thousand. So, I mean, and they're okay with that, I think they had got approved for a lot more two years ago because of the COVID era and stuff. So they're just looking, you know, if you notice in their application, they have like, project one, project two, so there's a bunch of projects that they're looking to do over time.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then, and the group did say, you know, 'cause when I asked them if, if they had been approved for twenty-nine thousand, does that mean, you know, I would always give the group an opportunity to scale back the request, so to speak, because it was about ten percent before. So he had just basically said that, that any amount that the county could give would be greatly appreciated towards advancing their, their goals.
Okay, so, um, that is, that is a big difference, for sure, thank you, CFO.
Yeah, I think that does change it significantly. Um, I think just, you know, um, food security and so on, and it being open to anyone within the county, it's not, you know, um, I, I'd be very much, you know, uh, like to see it supported. I understand that number's very large, and when we were talking a hundred thousand dollar project, it, you know.
Made more sense, yeah. Yeah, for sure, for sure, yeah. So, um, would you have an amount to suggest, Deputy Warden, or?
I, honestly, I'd like to see five, and I know that's still a lot, I think generally there are less applications from District Five, uh, for the most part. Um, I'd be willing to put two thousand of the district fund into that five, if people are okay with that.
So it would be a three thousand dollar investment?
From the region, yeah.
Okay.
'Cause if you look at the, I was gonna say, the financials and that, we're not in a situation here.
No.
That there's a lot of excess funds, they're, they're doing as much as they can with what they have. Yeah.
And I mean, if you look at the, like, they have their three projects that they were hoping to achieve, and really, like, number two and number three, the total of those are about fifty, but like, one of them is like thirty-four thousand, so really, if we, if they got twenty-nine from the.
From the provincial government.
Farm law and board.
Farm law and board, yeah, okay, right. So they go from them, and then if we gave five, that.
Yeah.
Pretty much gets them to at least get a project.
It gets them to the thirty-four thousand, and it would be about a fifteen, little less than fifteen percent contribution from the county.
Right, yeah, which is.
Not far, not far off, yeah. Okay, so the suggestion is, and if you'd like to turn that into a motion, you're more than welcome?
Uh, yeah, I'll make that motion, that we support a grant request to the amount of five thousand dollars, with two thousand coming from the District Five, uh, designated funds, and three thousand coming from the regional funds.
Okay. Any further, oh, could I have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll start.
Thank you, Councilor Sean Sampson. Any further discussion on that item?
The only thing I would, uh, I would say, so this is the second time in three years that they've applied for.
Yes, it's two fiscal years ago that we would have invested, yeah, with them.
Yeah, so, and I don't like to make it sound like I don't like to support it, I would just caution us that, you know, how many times we support one organization over and over, then we hold back from other organizations that, you know? I, I guess we, we cut back some organizations because we don't, we don't wanna put the full amount, however, other organizations we are, do support continuously, so. I, I do support the motion, I just wanted to.
Okay, great, thanks, counselor. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Forgot to kind of go back to you, but I think Jason had already done.
All right, CFO was on it with you.
I'm gonna get it right sooner or later, all right. Um, so, the next item in the agenda is a grant request from Straight Area Mutual Aid Association, um, for the amount of five thousand dollars, and they have noted some technical equipment and, um, and provided information as to what they're looking to finance, uh, through the, through the, uh, grant funds. So I would open this one up for discussion, um, from council, on how you feel about the five thousand dollar request.
I would have felt better if it would have come from our EMO, or with a letter supporting it.
I also don't, didn't see, like, to, to the point that we had from previous conversation, like, I didn't see what were the asks of other municipal units that are serviced by this straight area mutually. The, and the math didn't quite add up in the bottom of their request.
Yeah.
So.
Sometimes people are having difficulty.
Yes, I know, yeah, I know. I mean, so I, I kind of feel a little bit like this one is lacking a little information for me in terms of two, like, two parts, I think, I wasn't thinking about that at all, Councilor Diggden, but I'm glad you mentioned it, 'cause I think it's important, right, like, comments from, from the EMO. And then also, like, what are the asks of other, like, where does all the money come from for this thirty-seven-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know if that's something we can send back to.
Staff and refer it back.
Staff and refer it to Steve, just for his expertise, and, and I mean, if.
And how it fits into our other capital purchases that we're doing in this field. By all means, we can add that as a, a box to tick when it applies to some of the things he touches.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, okay, that, that would be probably our, our best bet at this stage, and I mean, I, like, I would not want us, I would not want them to interpret a slight delay as a not interested not want us, I would not want them to interpret a slight delay as a not interested in supporting, quite the opposite, just looking for a little bit more information, and just making sure that we don't have any overlap there as well on things that we're planning internally. So, yeah, if we could have a motion to refer that back to staff to get a little more information on the financing, particularly the asks of other municipalities, and just an analysis from our EMC.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you councillor Mike Digdon. Could I have a second, or please?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is a grant request, I think, if I'm guessing correctly. It's actually unfinished business, so these are two requests that we referred to this particular committee or the whole, because at the time they came forward in May, they were, I think, of an amount and also content that we needed more information, but also wanted to make sure that our budget was passed with a grant line in it and having an understanding of what that amount would be. So here they have landed back at Committee of the Whole for June, and the first one is a request from the River Bourgeois Mariner Society for the Type Four Regional Health General Grant in the amount of $1,500. And I think this is the one councillor Melanie Sampson, that you had had some questions about regarding the finances. So I'll open it up for discussion, but certainly if you would like to start, please jump in.
I don't, I don't know, like, I know that the CFO did send an email to Sherry just to clarify in terms of, like, the prior year's expenses regarding the poker run that we've sponsored previously, so that was a concern for me just when I looked at their financial statements. Again, I suspect it's maybe a posting thing, I'm not sure, but I just had questions in terms of how that related to their financials from last year. But then another thing which not related to that, to that question that the CFO has asked of Sherry is, like, a little bit of the murky waters that we get into in terms of, like, sponsoring events for fundraising. So my, I mean, my personal feeling is when we are, when organizations are charging people to participate in events, like a fundraising event like this, you know, if it was a new event and they needed support to kind of get it off the, get it off the ground, get it running, or, you know, in the case of the last run, I remember discussing how it was, you know, the first one since COVID, and maybe this would help them kind of get it back up and up to speed, but that I, I'm not sure that we want to make it an annual habit of sponsoring those types of events, because I do have concerns that it could become a bit.
Or maybe to a smaller amount, sort of like we do, like, with some of the, you know, when they have some small community events and so on, generally, the applications are, you know, in the range of $500.
Yeah, like a, like a much small, yeah, I would agree, that we're not covering all of the fundraising expenses, or we're not, right, or there's portions of the events that are free, right? So sometimes I think there are events and parts of them have no fee associated, and so we're helping to backfill the costs of those to make it accessible to people who perhaps can't afford it. And again, I think, I will also say that the thought of all of this really made me think that we need to have a deeper dive into that in the fall when we return in terms of our policy or processes for grants. That's neither here nor there, so I do, barring the reporting, I guess, of this, I still do have concerns with the whole 1,500.
And I'll, like, yeah, I know that we have supported this event to that amount in the past, albeit it was sort of, you know, certainly in the beginning, I think, the first time they came back to us, it was like the COVID restart, which I think was an exceptional circumstance, obviously, and then last year again, I think we supported about that amount.
Was that last year the COVID restart?
Or was last year the COVID restart? I'd have to, let me just look.
Because I feel like we may have approved it two years ago, but it never happened. Just going by memory, does that sound?
No, we did, we did a thousand, I think, with them, but I don't remember if it was for the poker run specifically, 20, it might have been for something else, so I'd have to go back and check that, in '21, '22. So, I mean, look, I, I agree, it is, it is a lot, again, at an early stage in the budgeting My thought is I'd like to be able to put $500 towards it from, from the District Four funds, but if, you know, if folks have concerns about the regional, applying regional funds to it, you know, I totally understand. I do think you're correct councillor Sampson, like, I do think we need to, you know, maybe as part of our budgeting process, we need to get as, as specific, like, the thing that I dislike about our grants program, the way it's set up, is that if we take each type of grant and assign an amount to each category, it kind of ties our hands if we, you know, we may have a lot in one category one year, you know what I mean, and then run out, and so, but I mean, maybe we could address that through making motions to move funds from one type to another. That's my concern, though, about going down that road, but I do, I do think we'd need some tightening up of, you know, of where grants apply. Maybe we just have one application and, and, you know, internally, we decide on the type which best fits it. You know, we could look at something like that. But anyway, that, that's, you're right, that is neither here or there, because that's a conversation for a later date, but I'd be interested in supporting the poker run to the, with $500 from the District Four funds, if folks would be supportive of that, or if we think we need more information, or.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I mean, like, like everything else, it's obviously a worldwide cause, and there's lots of voters and lots of events, and we kind of have to support, you know, we have to support some of them. Obviously, we wish we could support all of them at a full capacity, but we can't, so. I, I think I would be okay taking 500 from our district fund and 500 from your fund, if that's what you're offering up.
From the regional?
Yeah, they get two thirds of the way there, 1,000 instead of 1,500.
A thousand is what we gave last year, I just looked it up. Twenty, in the year '22, we gave a thousand. I can't find it.
Yeah.
And then I would caution us again that, I don't like to say repeat offender, but I think we have to start looking at, if you can't sustain yourself as an organization, then we can't expect the taxpayers to sustain the.
Yeah, and I.
And I know that sounds crude, the way it comes out, but I just.
Yep, I understand what you're saying.
You know, at a certain point, they have to be able to get the ball, you know, I'd like to think we get the ball rolling, and then they have to be able to continue on.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I would challenge it, because I hear that a lot, particularly around tourism-based activities like this, right? You know, if I think of, on the grand scale of things, and the Celtic Colors, you know, we make an annual contribution to Celtic Colors, we know that there's an economic impact of probably, well, I think the last study was in excess of $18 million on Cape Breton Island, and a good, you know, not, not all of it, but a good chunk of that does land in Richmond County, and so the idea of supporting something over and over again because it adds to the economic, you know, prosperity of our communities, the businesses that may benefit, but also the social fabric, like, I'm, to me, I see a direct tie into our strategic plan when I think about those repeat, like you call them offenders. I'm actually really glad that they're repeat offenders, because it means they continue to volunteer and do this work, right? But, but I see your, your point as well, is we do have to be careful, because we are constrained by the amount of funds that we have, for sure. So you're suggesting a $500 from the, you know, from the regional, and then 500, and like I said, I would be more than willing to put the 500 from the district funds, is that?
Yeah, so I'm more than happy to support your money going in, and again, I would support the 500 from the regional as well, to make, like you say, two thirds of the, two thirds of the ask, I guess.
Okay, did that, was that a motion?
I'll make that motion, yeah.
Okay. The motion has been made by councillor Mike Digdon to support the River Bourgeois Mariner Society on the amount of $1,000, with $500 coming from the District Four funds and 500 from regional. Could I have a second around that motion?
Yeah, I'll take that motion.
Okay, thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a grant request from the Cape Breton Fiddlers Association for the Type Four Regional Funds in the amount of $2,000, and I believe this one we had not just referred to this meeting because of, you know, wanting to better understand our, our budget, but it was also to get more information on the Richmond County activities.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the locations, I think, we were questioning locations, yeah.
To see if they had any confirmed at this point.
Yeah. So it looks like they've got one confirmed at, in St Peters, and then three additional planned for Richmond County. They've named communities, but just confirming, it looks like, confirming the locations, so those, these are going to take place kind of throughout the year, is my understanding. The one in St Peters is happening in June, so it would stand to reason, that would be confirmed location. And again, the request is for a $2,000 contribution. I do want to note that they are having an educational program. It looks like there are 15 students enrolled in the program that's going to operate out of the CSA, is it the CSAP? I think it's, I didn't, I forget.
It just said in Ayrshire.
It says Ayrshire. I believe it's the school, but they'll, you know, if not, I could be incorrect on that, but it does say Ayrshire specifically. So would folks be comfortable now, given that information with the $2,000 amount, or have any other comments on that?
No, it, it looks to me like, you know, most of these locations are, it mentions Ayrshire, Lord River, Lord West, and you said.
St Peters, yeah.
St Peters, so it looks like our county as well represented in all areas when it comes to this event, so for me, you know, I would like to see the 2,000 funded for this, for this event, and maybe put 200, because again, it's hitting all areas and all our districts. I'd like to see 200 each from our districts, and maybe 1,000 from our regional fund.
Okay. That's an interesting suggestion. Thanks councillor Sean Sampson. Before we turn that into a motion, I maybe I'll get some comments from councillors on it, to see how you feel about that. Deputy Ward, jump to you, I'm going around the table. It's 20, 20 and I.
After just committing a large portion of it, you know.
Yes.
Usually it's me that has some left over at the end of the year. I think I'd prefer to see it all just come out of the regional, to be honest. I think it's a reasonable request, and where it's hitting, hitting all areas, I think it'd be okay.
Okay, thanks Deputy Ward.
I would agree with the deputy.
Okay.
I love the way the two councillors over there keep your piggy banks closed until the end of the year.
I'll share later if I have to. I shared last year. You did, thank you.
I'm, I'm okay either way, honest and truly, it's, it's definitely well worth supporting, and again, like you say, there are students that are going to be participating, and then, you know, could be of all ages, so.
Yeah.
It'll, it's, it's a great event to come to our county, so whatever, yeah.
Okay, so councillor Sean Sampson, I'm hearing kind of majority support for 2,000 from the regional fund, if you're.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep my $200.
Okay. All right, would you care to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, so to take 2,000 out of our regional fund to support the Cape Breton Fiddlers event and association, yeah.
Okay, thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Could I have a second around that motion, please?
I'll take that.
Thank you councillor Mike Digdon. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Well, thank you, everyone. And thank you again to Jason, our CFO, for preparing so much work on that. That's, you know, a little over $13,000 that we've invested in our communities this evening, and it's really great to see all that activity going on, but I know it takes a pile of work.
It just goes from budget to grants to year end, just never ending, never ending fun for the CFO.
It can be, not a busy time.
Yes, the busiest.
Nothing to do.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, so the next item on the agenda, I think you had some question period procedures you wanted to discuss, and I know we started this discussion at the last meeting, we had a very small crew due to illness and travel, so, yeah, so councillor Mike Digdon, over to you, please.
Yeah, so I think we just have to, I don't know, maybe, I don't want to call it proper etiquette, or maybe, you know, there's, it's the second or third time that we've had, we've had, I guess, question period procedures either not being followed or just, you know, being interrupted, we've had, you know, cell phones ringing, we've had, I don't know, it might be just something we want to engage the public in and, you know, let, let the speaker know, and I hate to throw it at you, Madam Warden, but you're going to have to come down with a hammer. So let, you know, let the speaker, or let the whoever's sitting during question period, you know, it might be one question, and then the answer, and then a follow-up question. The only reason I brought it was because there was actually people at our last meeting that sat through the whole session and didn't get a chance to ask a question.
Right.
And then drove, you know, almost 40 minutes to get back home.
Okay. No, and you're right, so I know when we publish our agendas, we have some information about question period, but I'm wondering if maybe we could kind of refer this back to, for me and staff to maybe work together, to have a couple of little bulleted lists that I, you know, that I could just kind of reiterate at the beginning of each question period, or, yeah, at the beginning of each question period, to just remind people of the parameters, and to let them know that we're going to stick to them in the interest of time, and.
Sure, we can work on that.
And I think, you know, I think we have to set parameters, and again, like I mentioned before, we have to be a little bit flexible on the, you know, if we have somebody traveling 45 minutes or an hour away to come to a meeting, I don't think that we can say, you have two questions, and then you're done for this evening.
Yeah.
Right, like, I really do.
Or a gallery full of people.
But if we have a gallery full of people, then I think we have to be, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, councillor Melanie?
So I did, although I was absent the last meeting, I did watch the recording, so I did hear a lot of the discussions about it, and I just can't help but remember, you know, like, previous councils, they would have, like, a sign-in sheet, I think, for people who wanted to speak. I don't know that I want to go there, but I'm just, my mind is thinking about, like, what solutions would be possible. I've also seen, like, timers, and so we have our question periods set as 15 minutes.
For, for the, for Committee of the Whole?
Yeah, 15 or 10 and 10, right. But, but, you know, what, what if it was, like, five minutes a question, you know, and that includes the answer? So if you spend your whole time asking your question, you don't get much of an answer. And I don't, I don't necessarily love that, but I think that that builds in that respect piece, right? So if you only had, and if you had, like, a little stop-walk clock right there that was turned this way.
We have one.
Yeah, but turned towards the speaker, right? Turns towards the speaker, you know, you're up, click.
Yeah.
Right? Counting down your five minutes, that's, you know, and then we could, when they ask the question, if it's respect, you know, you'd stop it, you'd answer the question, obviously you wouldn't stick to it. But I, I'm, again, just wondering, and so I guess to your point about asking if it would be okay if you and staff kind of come up with some solutions that can work there, 100% I'm fine with that, but just some thoughts in terms of what those might, might look like.
Well, maybe we could circulate some draft points around, or.
Yeah, yeah, but we do, I think, to your, to your point councillor, we need to do something, because it's not, it's not okay.
Well, and, and, you know, I think, ask, you know, for phone, for folks who phone in, for instance, making sure that they identify themselves, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, those, these are things that we need to, you know, we need to make sure we're doing, right? And I, and I think these are things we need to make sure we're doing, so that we protect question period and make sure that it's here last and that doesn't go away again, so that's kind of where, where I'm coming from with this.
Yeah, and I, I mean, you know, we are here to serve the people and the public.
Yeah.
Again, what, my, my, my process is, I hate to see somebody walk out that door that felt unserved.
Right.
So, and that's what happened at our last meeting, was two people actually walked out that didn't get a chance to.
Okay.
I would say, Madam Chair, as well, don't forget that we do have a process for people to appear before council as well.
Yeah.
That is well documented on how they can do it, and make sure if they have questions, they can have their time to present to council. Nobody is eliminated from that process, but there is a process to be followed, and it does come with timelines and preparation, so that we can properly prepare to hear it And it does come with timelines and preparation so that we can properly prepare to hear it and make sure you guys have the information so that if a decision is sought, you have time to ponder and consider options. So that process does exist for the larger ones, but for smaller requests, and I get what you're saying, but there is also the one for larger.
Yeah.
And that's a part of the respect of other people, recognizing we do have procedures that we need to follow, just so that you have time to consider what's being put in front of you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I think our, our team should be very proud of the fact that we took back question period. I think we should be held accountable. We should be able to answer questions when our residents and, and our county ask questions for us. I think, like Counselor Digtin said, I think that, you know, there should be no gray areas. I think that, you know, you can gauge the room and if the room is empty and the phone is not ringing and someone sits in that chair and they want to ask 15 questions in 15 minutes, they can go do so because they got 15 minutes to do so. If the gallery is full and someone sits in that chair, I, you know, the, the process should be, hello, my name is whoever and my question to council is this. If it strays anywhere's away from that, uh, we should correct that situation ASAP.
Yeah, and I would only add that like what Counselor Digtin said originally, and this was my thought the other week, we talked about, there's like one question and one follow-up question. Because sometimes based on the answer they receive, that might trigger something else that, oh, okay, hold on. I'd like to clarify or whatever. So I, I, like, I'm good with that kind of thing. I don't think I want to limit anybody to just one.
No, no, no. Yeah, so, so, yeah, like, like Counselor Digtin said, a question and a follow-up. So after the first question, it would be, my follow-up question is this.
Yeah.
Again, if it strays from my follow-up question is this, uh, we, we, we...
Well, the follow-up can be different if they want.
Yeah, no, but, but when you address council, it should be, my first question is this.
Yeah.
And my follow-up question is this. And if it strays from that, then, uh, we have to put our foot down, in my opinion.
And when we say we, we mean Madam Warden.
Yeah, yeah.
I know. And they're telling me to do a better job, like, I understand.
No, 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 not at all. Again, we just want to treat everybody the exact same way.
I know. And I totally agree. Yeah, you're right. But it's, it's interesting and look, it's a good problem to have that we have, you know, strong public engagement.
And honestly, if we wouldn't have missed them two people, then it would have been no harm, no foul, but there were two people who actually...
Well, it, it did go quite over time as well, which is an issue.
Yeah. No, for sure. No, it sounds great. Um, like again, very lucky to have this as a, as a problem that we're, we're dealing with because it means that people are engaged and they're doing the things that, that they should be doing to help us grow our community, so it's awesome.
I don't think we need a motion to any of this, you can just, it's up to you.
I think I would like it in a motion, just so that it makes the action list. Um, and so maybe the motion could be to refer, um, you know, revision on question period procedures, uh, to the warden and CEO.
Sounds good.
Have you okay?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Mike Digtin. Can I have a second round on that?
Oh, special man gives your work time.
He's not easy. Thank you, Deputy Warden, for seconding that motion. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. So the next item on the agenda is the review of checks issued, uh, from May 2023. Did anybody have any questions about those for staff? Um, so hearing none, next item is the review of the action items. And, and actually, I feel like we need an adjustment, Shelley, I did email you about this one. Um, the, um, the item that we had on the chamber upgrades and the quote from Bachman did come, I think we, you know, since our budget discussions, we've kind of gone in a different direction and setting a budget line aside for improving tech here, but also kind of general building maintenance. So we may want, just want to write that as complete and adjusted for, you know, in budget 23, 24.
Yeah.
Um, that might be helpful.
I would agree.
Rather than seeing it hanging there as undone. I scan that list every week for Warden, Warden, Warden. I want to make sure.
Where's my name?
My name is not there. Um, and, and of course, as, as discussed, hopefully for the next meeting, I'm confident we'll have the Pondville Beach letter gone out as well. So, all right, perfect. Um, any other questions on the action item list? All right, so we have a couple of items added to the agenda. And the first one was, uh, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. So two folks in our community sort of brought this to my attention and provided some information. So many thanks to Celeste Hotel and Michelle Mcfee. And June 15th is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. And just Michelle was very kind enough. So Michelle, of course, is our Senior Safety and Social Inclusion Officer and Counselor, Deputy Warden has masks for each of us.
Nice.
Oh, I thought you were going to get them to share.
We got them last year.
Yes, that's right. You, you were remembered to take yours from last year. Um, so she has provided some information and I do just want to take a minute to read some of it because it's a, you know, it's staggering for me to learn about this every year and feel it needs to be shared. It's estimated that one in six Canadian seniors experience abuse. Reports of elder abuse soared in Canada as COVID-19 further isolated vulnerable seniors, especially during the lockdown periods, because isolation's an important factor that abusers use to control their victims. And a lot of times, victims are reliant on their abusers for their basic needs, including shelter, transportation, food, money, and et cetera, which makes disclosure really, really difficult. So it's a complicated issue. Things that we do know, so Michelle was able to provide me with some statistical information from the work that she's done here in Richmond County. Um, of the 85 seniors that have connected with the soc, excuse me, Senior Safety and Social Inclusion Program since January 2023, so this is six months, uh, 5% were looking for support with abuse or neglect. And that's right here in our own county. And that doesn't include the 411 or so, I think she wrote, seniors who reached, that, that the program reached via community outreach. So this was direct contact to her office. And financial abuse tends to be what's most often disclosed. It's usually unfortunately perpetrated by a family member, um, making the disclosure all the more challenging. And so, you know, she went on to explain that we need to explore opportunities for families to resolve issues of abuse outside of the court system because it tends to be very public. Um, and seniors are less likely to report abuse to the RCMP if their family members are going to be facing these types of serious consequences. And, you know, she and I kind of talked about the restorative justice model and how well that works for some folks in terms of, you know, um, setting people back on a right path and, and allowing for resolution while protecting, you know, the discretion and the privacy of both the, the victim and the, and the abuser. So, um, you know, just that's the thoughts that we had, uh, together and, and certainly would defer to Michelle's expertise on that. But just, she also noted that it's important to note that the percentage in the numbers doesn't paint a picture of this, a complete picture of the situation because of course, so much goes unreported, um, and, you know, especially when it's a family member. So collectively, just some thoughts, uh, from her perspective, you know, um, you know, we can be apprehensive about getting involved in a situation in which we suspect abuse might be taking place, but it's important not to look away. Trust your gut. Talk privately with the individual or reach out to the following service providers. And she has listed both 211, uh, which I was not aware, hosts a senior abuse line. So you can just dial 211 from your phone to speak with someone, as well as, of course, reaching directly out to Michelle Mcfee, the Senior Safety and Social Inclusion Coordinator. Um, best way to reach her is by phone at 902-587-2800. Those are great places to start. She has an email address as well, and maybe that's some information we could publish if, you know, and maybe publish some information, um, related to Elder Abuse Day, which is coming up. Um, and obviously to learn more, and she also has, uh, offered to organizations if, you know, that she could host a free abuse prevention workshop for clubs and groups in the county, so.
Can you repeat that number?
Yeah, sure thing. It's 902-587-2800.
Thank you.
So that's the phone number for the Kingston Health Center in, in Lord Waze, but of course, that program is serving all corners, every corner of Richmond County, and you can reach her through there. So, uh, any questions or comments about this particular item? Okay, so maybe we could just ask staff to kindly put some social media out and I can connect you with her and some other information if that's helpful. Yeah, okay. Great, um...
Disappointing to see we even have more than 1%.
Yes, it's very disappointing, but I think happens way more than we think. Um, yeah, okay. So the next item on the agenda, uh, the items Adam has added was a CSAP discussion regarding the sidewalk and the safety of students traveling. So, um, just wanted to let folks know that I think on Thursday morning, Friday morning of last week, Troy and I met with Michelle Colette, who is the General Manager for the CSAP head office. Uh, there's going to be some significant work, uh, because it's already been improved up at Ecolbeport starting this summer. They've received some funds to prolong the life of the building. It's mostly exterior work. They have some paving approved, but not specifically on the driveway. And so the work that they've got planned for this fiscal year doesn't really align with what we were talking about at council. So they'll remember the options. We presented three of them to the CSAP folks and it was first to, um, support sidewalk-only development, second to support sidewalk and paving, and then the third to support also the paving on the, um, on the exit driveway. Um, and so we talked about all three of those options. Um, the bottom line is their budget this year has already been allocated and planned. They are, however, now planning for 2024, 25. Um, they had already started to discuss sidewalk, pedestrian connection from the school on this side to Highway 206. So this was what they referred to in their letter. Um, they just were not planning it for this specific year, looking at it as more of a next-year project. They, you know, I will tell you, it was a great conversation. Um, Mr. Colette was very interested in partnering with the municipality. He did indicate that the exit driveway project would probably not be something that they would be interested in partnering on because I think, like us, very focused on the safety and the act of transportation and accessibility piece for the school. Um, they, so they're looking to work with us on a plan for 2024, 2025. And so I know from his, our discussion, it sounds like they have an internal process that they use to identify which projects come up as a priority for infrastructure, but he felt strongly that this would, this would be a great one. Um, and I think particularly, you know, because they're already considering this work now and, and of course, that now we, we would have a willing partner in Richmond County to work with. Uh, so his suggestion was that we meet in January to work through a specific project and to create a plan for the next fiscal. He couldn't specifically commit to the 50%, which we had suggested in the letter, because I think the way that their budgets are, you know, work is just like ours, they would do a specific amount. Uh, you know, he said, don't, it's not going to be kind of a lowball discussion, but it might be 47 or it might be 40, you know what I mean? Or it might be whatever percentage, but it would be a specific amount that they would allocate for a specific project, not a percentage, which is totally reasonable. That's how we budget as well. So, um, also important to note that this work, in his mind, did not need to be done in July and August. And in fact, he discouraged that, uh, because I believe from a school perspective, from a school board perspective, when they have internal projects that need to be done in schools, they use the summer months to prior, to get those projects done because they're the kinds of projects that can't be done with students in the, in the building oftentimes. And so they, you know, they'll often do external projects like paving, like the kind of work we're talking about here, um, in sort of the fall timeframe or the spring timeframe. And, uh, the example he gave was that they repaved the parking lot at the Sydney School in October, I think. So this would be of last year, so this would be something that, uh, that they would look at doing most likely during the school year. Um, I think that sums up the gist of the conversation. Um, you know, actions, I guess I would suggest after talking with him is, you know, I, I still think we, we want to maybe speak with local school officials here and talk about what we could do to help, to mitigate some safety concerns for this year. Um, but I think in the meantime, um, you know, perhaps we consider looking at the exit driveway. Uh, we, we've budgeted that in our operating budget, as you'll, you'll recall, it's not part of our, well, it's part of our five-year capital plan, but it's specifically, we have operating funds, um, a set aside for that project. Um, so maybe we could look at, um, you know, doing that, going ahead with that project and, and talking with the school and, and maybe, I don't know if there is an opportunity to widen the driveway a little bit or to put some signage on it or whatever the case may be.
This one over here.
Yeah, to help with some safety concerns. And if this was done in advance of, of the project next year on this side, it would make mitigating that traffic flow a whole lot easier because we have a higher quality pavement there, right? So, so just some discussions, uh, I guess, for, for consideration. Um, and I just open this for comment or suggestions from council at this point. So, Counselor Sean Sampson, I'm going to start with you because I know this was a close year.
Well, yeah, this is dear to my heart, yeah. So, I mean, and, and for me to see this done sooner, this, you know, sooner the better, right? And this is all positive information, Madam Warden and CEO. Thank you for having that meeting with Michelle Colette. I mean, this is all positive. So, you know, I guess, I guess we're looking at, you know, January of 2024 to, to have this discussion when it comes to this ASAP budget. And, uh, so hopefully, you know, we can see some of this side come to fruition in the spring of 2024 and try to get it done ASAP. I, I totally agree with you, Madam Warden, that if it's not going to be done during the summer months and it's going to be done during the school season, maybe we take our budgeted amount and we do try to fix the exit driveway, uh, maybe widen that up, if it's possible to widen it up, right?
If it's even possible, that's right.
Uh, because again, if they're going to be using that as, as a two-way traffic driveway, uh, because we're going to be working on this side, then, yeah, whatever we can do to fix that side first, I guess, would be, uh, the initial plan and, and the number one step, I would say.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'd be...
Yeah, my only thought would be, I guess, in, in conjunction with what they would think of how our end public works here, obviously, how that could be planned, because maybe there's, you know, as we discussed in the past, there may be a cost savings to do that paving project on both sides at the same time, but maybe it does make more sense to do it separately to allow for that, you know, to be sort of everything in good shape there while this is worked out. So I, I think I'd be open to either, either way, depending what works.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Counselor Melanie Sampson?
Yeah, as you were giving your update, what you sort of suggested was exactly where my mind was going as well, like obviously, uh, given their positive, um, attitude towards participating with us on, on the, the side of the building, I think, you know, we hold off until we have those conversations with them in January to finalize that plan, um, and where we already have the exit driveway budgeted. I mean, I guess what I would suggest here is, um, now we've kind of passed, you know, number one, we're, we're, we have a quote, uh, you know, we've asked for quotes, which included all the parts, and so that may change what that price looks like. There may be a lot of pieces, of course, the Director of Public Works might find out as he kind of goes back to the, to the contractor to see what the situation is, but, um, yeah, my feeling would be that, that we do now, you know, that our, that our attitude is, is to go, is to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we just need to revisit to make sure the numbers still work.
Okay.
But I would, I would be in favor of proceeding this year if the numbers still work.
On the exit side?
On the exit side, yeah.
Okay. Um, Counselor Digtin, would you like an opportunity?
Yeah, the, um, so, yeah, I, I agree with moving forward with the, uh, definitely the exit side. The only, my only concern would be, uh, if the meeting in January tends to have a different spin.
Mm-hmm.
Then, uh...
We cross that bridge when we come to it, I think, right?
Yeah, I would, I would hope we cross the bridge though, is my, is, I guess, would be my, my point. Um, because I do know a part of the concern was spending that much on a complete project. So if we put the, I guess, the cart before we go with the horse, then I would just hope that we're going to buy the horse when it's time to do so. That would be one concern. My second one would be the, and I don't, I don't know, and it's not my job to know, but the, for paving, I hope we go with an accredited paving company. And I only say that because I do know that there's a company in, so, Sobeys got the parking lot done and now has issues.
Yeah.
So just, that, I, again.
Yeah, I'm sure that staff will take that under consideration, but
And, yeah, and not my, not my, my bag to shake, but I just, yeah.
It's a good flag, yeah. Okay. All right, so I think at the end of the day then, just to ensure that we gives, I don't know, Troy, would you like to speak to this? I'm trying to figure out a motion that will give staff the most flexibility
Right.
in terms of communicating with the contractor, finding out information, deciding on what the best course of action is.
Just refer back to us to come back with options at your council meeting at the earliest possible.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that possible by our regular council meeting? I'm just recognizing that we're going to break for summer, and I think that's too quick. Yeah, it's too quick.
We won't have pricing.
Exactly. Yeah.
I mean, would it be possible to possibly have a
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, that old bid was based on mobilizing already for this side, was it not?
Yeah, this wasn't extra to do in that job.
Right.
That's the only thing we're looking at it, we wouldn't go by those.
Right, exactly. So Deputy Warden?
If we wanted to proceed, I mean, maybe there's an option to do a virtual meeting, special meeting. Call a special meeting, it'd be virtual, whether or not, you know what I mean? If anybody is not around at that time, that way we're, yeah.
There's the possibility of it being done in the late summer, fall.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just to, to give staff that freedom to, to work on it right away and if, if we can help, we can hold them long.
Exactly.
Perfect.
Would that be acceptable?
That's acceptable.
Okay, so the motion will be to refer the matter back to staff to look at options for the exit driveway for this coming year. And then we will regroup as a council in a special meeting when the time comes.
So would we be actually saying like that they're going to put out a request for proposals again?
I think we would leave that, if we could leave that flexibility with staff, you can just determine how you would best proceed.
We heard what you're trying to achieve, so we'll use that scope and go from there.
And I'm assuming if it, like, possibly our budgeting may have been low if it was an add-on to that. But if for some reason
Yeah.
it came in within the budgeted amount, we don't have to be consulted anymore after this point then, right? Like, we've already approved this, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a good chance you're going to get a call.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I think that's a long shot, I just figured, on the off chance that it
Yeah.
comes in roughly what was budgeted, then there's no need to have a special meeting because
Well, there, there is paving happening up there and
Yes.
and the company who may be doing it may look at our, at that as an add-on to that.
Right.
So it might, I never know.
It's happened in the past if we've been able to make things like that work, so.
We'll leave that in staff's hands.
Great, okay, so the motion is to refer the matter back to staff to come up with some options for proceeding with the exit driveway. Could I have a mover on that, please?
Make your motion.
Thank you councillor Shawn Sampson.
I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Mike Digtin. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, if I just may ask, if the Director of Operations has any comment that he would like to make to make sure that we got the motion covered at this point.
You're all set?
You're good.
Okay, cool. All right, and thanks for your work on this so far, Chris and Troy and team. I know it's been a piece of work, so. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Hey, that motion is carried. So now we're going to move to our fifteen-minute question period. And so there's, you know, if there are members in the gallery who would like to ask a question, we'll ask you to come to the mic and state your name, ask your question. Also, if there are members of the public watching at home, you can phone in with your question. The number to call is nine zero two 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 six nine eight eight five. That's nine zero two 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 six nine eight eight five. So we'll just give that a minute. I know one of these days we're going to do this question period and there's going to be music during the wait. I know it's going to happen.
Jeopardy music?
You're going to surprise me something.
It'll be something else.
Oh, okay.
Not Jeopardy music, but music would be nice.
We'll find an elevator soundtrack somewhere.
Yes, there's got to be something, yes. All right.
If you live on the East Coast, there's better options than that.
I don't think there's too much of a delay anymore, right?
No, it shouldn't be.
Stay in Rogers.
Maybe we can give them that fiddle stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll call it an evening. Thank you Shelley for being at the ready to answer calls. We are not hearing any coming in for question period this evening, so I'm going to ask for a motion to move us in camera to discuss personnel matter.
So moved.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson, could I have a seconder on that, please? Thank you Deputy Warden. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed? All right, that motion is carried, so we'll wrap up our televised broadcast. Thanks for joining us online, everyone. And thanks to staff for being here, much appreciated.